...on the Board of Commissioners' order today's date is the seventeenth of December, it's five fifteen PM, do you please call the row?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Mission change to the ten on this evening. Here you none will move into pelvic request and this evening we have a podium set up for you to address the commission with your concerns and requests. If you would please keep your comments to three minutes this evening so that we can move on to our long agenda item that we have this evening. We'll be keeping the time so with the three minute points on your buzzer and Joanne will indicate that your time is up. This time the floor is now open for pelvic request. Please come on.
Yes, thank you for your attention. I just want to notice that I'm one of the private...
Thank you.
Sorry. It's looking five ninety-six one northwest second avenue apartment one two Boca Raton Florida. Hamlet Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm very concerned the fact that I've been here eight and a half years. I moved in that particular house which is the second one in from the northwest corner and I'm likely to believe that the clubhouse is going to be further along than I expected, three hundred feet or something like that from the road which will impose my view it sounds like. I have some health issues and that would really affect my health if I don't have an outlook to look out to the golf course and the fact that, you know, I paid for my property back in two thousand and ten, it really hurts me to think that there's no consideration for the people that live there. Apart from the fact it's very noisy already, there's a huge volume of traffic, it's going to double, it's already doubled since I moved in there, so now it's going to double even more and it'll be noisier than ever. And right now because of the knockdown hotel and the clubhouse there on the east side, we hear all the trains twice as badly as we did before. So it's really impeding my life in there already and you guys haven't even started on the golf course yet. And I'm going to be looking right into that golf course with all that noise going to happen. So you're not really making it any easier for me and the residents that live there. Germaine Stoper's just moved into right on the corner, she probably didn't know that this was going to happen. So it really is going to affect us in many different ways. And I'm not exactly sure it's going to affect our property prices. If I ever want to move, I'm sure it's going to have a bad effect on our properties along that area. And I'm not happy at all. I think you really need to think about some kind of kindness in what you're doing to the people out in that neighborhood and give us some reconsideration.
Yes ma'am.
I really appreciate the time.
We've spoken to the public, five public hearings and this is the first time this concern has been addressed to this commission, so we'll take your concerns and advice.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you.
Hello Robert, you can't find your way. Welcome to us, Service Terrace. First of all, I want to thank all the commissioners for your service. I think that I wish you all a very Merry Christmas. I don't think we're going to have meetings potentially until after the new year, so thank you for, again, your service. I'm here today with some other members of our group, Sabo Patum, not Sabo Patum, we are here today representing the largest organized group in the community with interest in the redevelopment of former Ocean Beach Golf Course. Our group includes golfers with significant experience in playing and managing golf activities. Our group includes residents who live inside and outside Boca Raton area. We are here to help the commissioners with that nature over two hundred acres of land to bring public regulation level golf into our city. Some of our leaders have used the previous golf course for years and active users are very familiar with the strengths and weaknesses of the old course design and layout. Our leaders are also lived in the general area around the golf course and we recognize potential positive attributes to bring in top quality regulation golf course into our area. We are used to having three hundred plus golfers per day using this facility, so traffic issue is not expected to be a major change within the area if the master plan is well constructed. Traffic could be improved within the area with utilization of the southeast intersection site for the new clubhouse which you might be talking about tonight, I believe. There would be challenges as this is unique property with three distinct parcels and it could result in increased debris traffic, again, if it's upon the master plan. The initial location clubhouse in the area near the current tennis courts was a great location for looking out the King's Fairway which was probably the architect's intent, but it is not very comfortable location due to the poor traffic circulation within the area. The design of the golf course, the clubhouse along with the cost of maintaining the golf course, including the issues now being considered. So please consider the expertise and our leaders for making your decisions. We look closer, we will look closer now at option number one or it looks like we have a new option here today possibly for Wayne and the people of the architects. Let me turn the next portion of the Keep Golf in Boca response and comments to our opposing friends, golfers in the room, Coach Angelo Sanz to cover some of the golf recommendations from our group. Thank you.
Experienced, I think, is another word for old, okay? Angelo Sanz, seventy-three, forty-eight, East Country Club, O'Hare, Boca. What I have presented to the board and I have copies is, I won't have enough time to go over this obviously, but what I've tried to do, like I've done for the last year and a half, is to supply you with, you know, questions to ask the architect as far as the development of this facility is concerned. You know, there's just so, you know, what do they say, the devil's in the details. And, you know, the details of the golf course, things like tees and fairways, bunkers, grass bunkers, hazards, water carry, all that type of thing, the dog leg, the angles, it's endless. And so what I've tried to do is to supply you with, these questions are like to be, you don't have to have to be, these are questions for the board to, when you're meeting with your developer, with Fazio Group, to just ask concerning different aspects of the course is concerned. Because, you know, it's like even building a playground, with building a playground relatively simple, the construction, it's the maintenance that's difficult and that's ten times full as far as the golf course is concerned. It's one thing to build it, it's another thing to maintain it. And so these are just some questions that, you know, as you come up with different ideas, different projects and different ways of doing things that maybe could be incorporated into, into the discussion that you have. One of the other things is that in looking over the present blueprints as far as the course is concerned, the only thing I can say that, and again, you know, was it's going to change. If there's anything we know it's going to change. You know, they're going to run into a pipe, there's going to be something there that's going to cause a change. But I was thinking on the short course, number one has always been a real short part five and I don't see it changing a whole lot. What happens is we create an instant backup on the line because it's a part five and it's easily hit two. Number two and five, when looking at the blueprints, they're going to be short, there's no way around that, but I think that doesn't mean it doesn't have to be difficult. That can be, rather than difficult, just simply like doing what you got to manage with Fazio Group as far as degrees are concerned. I think not a big change, I thought was something nice with seven and eight. Seven right now is a dog leg left and eight is a part three. I thought it would be nice to have a part three, a part four driver, a driver will make an eighth driver haul and then nine, two good finishing holes. And, Mel, wrong? So that's it, so again, good luck and off of your disguises as always. I hope some of these talking points can help you all as far as working with Fazio Group, trying to figure out and then doing a great job obviously and we appreciate it. Thank you and happy holidays to everybody. Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you, Angelo Sanz. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to move my second name on President Keep Golf in Boca. I'm sorry, I just meeting last Monday, but that just came up my head. I heard that you were going to basically thinking about moving the clubhouse over to the east side. I think that's very appropriate, there's a lot of different reasons. First of all, the taxpayer, they'll save a whole lot of money towards infrastructure, but most of the stuff is on that side. You've got the six inch main, you've got the back roads for the fire system, you've got the drains, so does water, things, everything's changing. The second thing is that the position that the old clubhouse was in was actually facing like north, east, the northwest. If you know the sun sets in that area, it's brutal. And I know that you designed it, there's a big walkway around the outside of a balcony, nobody's going to use that balcony by the block when they come over the course. The perfect location probably to use for facing east so you get the hot sun in the morning, later in the afternoon it's nice and cool and you can basically get more people going to the balcony and enjoy yourself. The, I just said things are going to change, I just hope that we don't undersize it, but I'd like to see the clubhouse basically utilized as much as possible. Because I know that most of the golfers over today are going to be using it, they'll have a restaurant, I'd like to see something used like an evening area, maybe somebody who wants to have a birthday party or just rent a place or maybe just have, you know, equalize it, you know, as much as possible can because income is the most important. I want to make sure this place basically is sufficient, you know. And I think it's going to be a beautiful thing and like I said, you guys have worked really hard on this and all of us, you know, we're really, especially Fauve, and also Ben Adam, you know, the art, art basically had more hair and Chris Don, it wasn't great. But I hope he sticks around and sees all things completed. And everybody, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and I believe a happy Hanukkah and, you know, I'm waiting for this to be a win and success.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close this portion of the meeting. Commissioners in your packet are the minutes of previous board meeting, first three special meeting held this November the twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Here none, all the favors the eye, both black sign, passion, and actually. The next item, the regular meeting held December the third.
Second.
The second, question corrections, here none, all those in favor is the eye.
Eye.
Both black sign and passion naturally. First order of regular business is inspection of the clubhouse location at Boca National Golf Course, Mr. Brian Brightwood. Wayne.
Good evening, Commissioners, asking, ladies and gentlemen, if you're all coming tonight. At the previous meeting, we outlined three basic options that included keeping an area open for the hotel and moving the maintenance center on the, at the intersection of northwest second avenue and Jeffrey. So this, it's basically this here, so we had the maintenance center here, we had the clubhouse over here on the north corner and we had a smaller clubhouse that would service this, this area here. At the, at the time that we presented that, we asked the commissioners for another, you know, until this meeting, that we could complete our thoughts and presentation for a fourth option. And basically what that, that option is, is one, we remove the clubhouse from this area. We take that clubhouse, we put it in this area here, consolidate the two clubhouses into one that provides the same or more of a function, but it's obviously it's run out of one clubhouse, so managing it's, it is easier. And that does several things. Number one is it helps us a little bit with the golf course here to make the golf course, to improve the golf course, make it even better. Over on this side here, it then becomes, as I said, far more manageable, more efficient, and while still providing all of those same amenities to, to all three quadrants here. So the idea being that, you know, if you were coming from Flintmore, you would come straight into the project here, drop your clubs off, park your car, utilize the clubhouse, and then from there you would either move to the range, the restaurant, the putting course, go out and play a short nine while ultimately back under the tunnel to the first tee, play nine, continue with ten through eighteen, and then back through the tunnel under Jeffrey and then underneath northwest second avenue. I think as we've said from the beginning, we, we are, we are faced with a fixed property. We've got, we've got three quadrants here and we will, you always have to give up something to get something. And, you know, our feeling is that this is a, it's a good option, you know, you don't have the ability to look over a lake, so the view is different here, obviously you have the railway line here, however, we do know that we can landstat this to create an equally beautiful area around this clubhouse where it'll just be a fantastic place to be and to enjoy whatever activity you choose to take on here. All of the elements that we discussed in those previous options remain, other than the fact that they're out of here and the maintenance facility is on the east side up against the railway line, it's, it'll probably actually end up being more in that area, but that's, that's essentially where it is. There's a, a closer of the area. So in terms of, of traffic, I think it solves a lot of issues, I don't know that it solves everybody's issue, but, but obviously using that intersection as the entryway in and out is ideal. Our intention would be to raise this entire area here to where the clubhouse overlooks all of the facilities here. And, you know, again, I just think that this, this is an ideal location for the golf course. It makes financial sense, operational sense. You do have to give up a couple of things, but I think in terms of what you get back in, from a perspective of a better golf course, probably improved traffic, I think it's a good trade-off for the district and for all the golfers that are going to be using this facility.
Are you looking for a direction for this, this location? Yes. Commissioners, questions? Are, I'm, right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make sure that everybody's aware that this clubhouse will be a multifunctional clubhouse, is not going to be solely dedicated to golf.
If I, if I can, it's because we do have a conceptual layout here which Mr. Garcia would, would take us through and explain some of that multi-function use that we've incorporated, that they've incorporated to the George community. And objects. This is our architect and forget club house, Mr. George Garcia, Garcia Strong.
You done? First of all, I want to apologize for my...
Oh, oh. I thought you introduced me, I'm sorry.
My name is George Garcia with Garcia Strong, we're the architects.
Thank you.
The clubhouse, our physical buildings, architects, working in tandem with our friends from Price Fazio Golf. I want to apologize for not being my usual dapper self here like Wayne, but the last time I was here, he dragged me from leaving out of town on business, this time I was out of town and he dragged me back here again, so he asked me to not to, at the risk of repetitively speaking of the items that Wayne spoke of, and so if we feel very satisfied with hearing where the clubhouse has been located now to the east side, I have bittersweet feelings about that, but of course, that's not as consequential as all the other important reasons that it should be here. We frankly feel that for the programmatic needs that are now at hand and being the kind of facility that it needs to be and the activities that it needs to address, it is probably much better than sort of than instead of like highlighting itself with a beautiful view to the eighteenth and so on, we can let that go because we have other reasons that it needs to be where it is. And frankly, the area and the uses right outside of it, the quaintness of it will allow us to do, to deliver ability that does a lot more than just present itself as a functional golf clubhouse. With that, we have been working, as it happens often, we're working with the architectural solution and at the same time working with the architectural contents of what's going to go in here. So we're, we're, at the same time getting feedback as to how things work and then we're also getting fed opinions and input from what should be in it. So if there's no bowling alley in it that you'd like to have in it, it's not our fault, it's that nobody asked us to put a bowling alley in it. So with that, the interest to the, to the principal interest to the clubhouse as we know is here, there's some circulation issues that have to be addressed as we, as you give us direction that, yeah, this is where we want it and these are the things that we want in it, there's a lot of items that can be very easily resolved. The clubhouse really has three areas, obviously it has a center area, the food and beverage area, if you will, we call it, and the communal area, which has a grill room, a bar, don't tap the seats because they're not designed yet and this is just an area where the grill would be, the kitchen is here and its administrative areas are in this vicinity here. Off to the north side, if you will, is the wellness center, which we've talked about programmatically is the room that, and I'll explain a couple of things, that's the wellness center. And the south side happens to be the more golf oriented and multipurpose area and of course engaging with all the activities that are going to be occurring in this area here, that's the pro shop. You can literally come in from the south side and enter the pro shop, check in and do your stuff without having to get formalized about entering the clubhouse and going to the center and then going off to the pro shop then. These are the areas on the other side, men's and women's. What we have committed to now, knowing that there is not a total and finite, exact usage of everything in the clubhouse, we have continued the conceptual design of it in a, in a way as to provide as much flexibility as possible for whatever you want to do in it, whether you want to, the gentleman said a little bit ago, want to have a place for a large party, a small party, a segregated party, or taking over the whole clubhouse or operating as a multifunctional clubhouse where you can come in here and have cold beer before or after your golf game and you can still have the exterior area where you can watch the kids and the family kind of activities that are occurring in our sort of totally active functions that are going to be happening there. So we're trying to continuously integrate as much flexibility as possible and as we bear down on it, eventually there are some areas that we will provide with flexible partition and so on, but right now we're trying to keep it as flexible as possible for as many uses as possible. So we're only as good as the sheet music we get to play to and then our architecture sort of plays to it. So this is the clubhouse right now, the square footage with now the combined programmatic areas that we had before in two clubhouses, as you recall, is approximately fifteen thousand square feet, I believe we were at close to twelve to thirteen in our, in our last iteration. And in addition to that, of course, we have the areas below which would be a lot of the mechanical areas, cart storage, storage for the other elements that are not needed to be in these places, particularly if we are going to be a flexible facility, we're going to have to put tables, chairs and all the other elements that will be pulled out to address whatever function is happening at the time predominantly. With that, I guess all I have is hopeful answers to your question.
Before we get into questions on that, Wayne. Yes ma'am. I know George always does tend to go to the party side of things, but what he didn't mention is that we can, again, this is a community project, so we want to have the ability to host HRA meetings, any, you know, the community can use this facility. It's not just for golfers or whoever, it's, it's for everybody. So, and that's why George has created that multidimensional options that we can, you know, depending on the size of the party, that we can accommodate fairly large size in the clubhouse and cater to hopefully a lot of the community. I think, you know, you asked earlier, you know, what do we want from you, as, as George said, you know, we don't know if this is, we need to know where the buildings are going to go first of all. And then from this point, the commissioners really need to direct somebody to assist us to move this process forward because we can't come back every two weeks and say, well, we've made the restaurant bigger, does this work? Or we've made the lounge a little bit smaller. So we need, we need some kind of representation that can work with us in a more, in a more effective timeframe and so that as we work together as a team that they're part of that and we can get through them your feedback as to, you know, some of the, you know, some of the needs, the cost, you know, and if there are cost implications, what those, you know, how we handle those. So, you know, we really do need direction. I think we've brought this process now to a point to where I think you can decide on the master plan, but now going forward, we are going to need some guidance on behalf of the district. Both good points. We should, I think, the first thing we do is bifurcate this so we don't confuse ourselves with too many questions on the whole concept of the location and the design of the clubhouse. Let's first, if we can, decide if we'd like the location moved to the southeast corner and if there's questions that you have regarding that, let's get those out there, get those answered now then we can go into the other aspect.
with too many questions on the whole concept of the location and the design of the clubhouse. Let's first, if we can, decide if we'd like the location moved to the southeast corner. And if there's questions that you have regarding that, let's get those out there. Get those answered now that we can go into the other aspects that Wayne mentioned. One is the design of the clubhouse and the layout with insight. And then how do we move this project forward so that we're not having to wait over two weeks to come back for designs and changes that we want to implement? That's our review. And Craig, you've got the microphone, you want to start there?
Okay. First of all, thank you for both members presenting everything. So speaking of the location, other than Ms Brown there, I do know the location change is the first time we've heard that, but I'm going to use an expression that I hope doesn't offend you, but in order to make an omelet, it breaks meds. And basically certain aspects of it, I would hope that you, your home value has significantly increased with the acquisition by the district to develop this into a golf course. And so we have done our darndest to listen to Mr Chaffey, Mr Duquette and everyone else to identify the best locations and where we're going and how to rebuild it. And I think we're, we've taken far longer than we all imagined interviewing seventeen architects, five of them twice. And the coming back to where we are in December, I agree, it's taken a long time and it's directly affection. But in my heart, I do believe that the location of the golf course on the southeast side is the best location because of a variety of factors, one of them being the financing for the city that basically split our title kind of. Instead of all profit-making activities have to be on the east side as opposed to the west side. I'm sure we could work something out with the city, but the new course, the benefits are going to really be in the short course and in the driving range. So the first part bifurcating, I think it's a really good idea to move it over on that side. I do, I have not had the chance to look at the hotel study. And so we are giving up a very valuable piece of property for saying there's not going to be a hotel there. And that's something that we, I'd like to at least have the opportunity to read the study to see what it said, to understand that, but essentially it makes sense, more sense to put that clubhouse over there. That said, I'm not sure, Mr Garcia has put a number to all of this stuff. Fifteen thousand square feet, it could be a lot of money and we have to talk about the timing of it. And that's not your question, but I don't want to deal with that. But I also would say I have not, we have not fully agreed upon a massive putting range either. I mean, if it's proposed, I'm not sure I really would do that only because the cost of maintaining it and the concept around it. So I think we need a little bit more thought around that. What we agreed to was a driving range, a short course and eighteen hole golf course. Along with that comes restrooms and a maintenance facility. To me, I'd like to see the rest of those things, those are all go and that's where you need someone on the ground. Those are tough decisions, it sounds crazy, but they are tough decisions. Because there is, you know, basic bathrooms and there are very elaborate bathrooms, but we have to figure that all out before we can go to the city because that's what we're going to be asking for financing for. So those are a little ahead of the clubhouse design. And I'm looking to those aspects as well. But the location, yes, I think that's the right location.
Okay, great. And I think after you see the C D Richard Ellis assessment of the hotels, I actually would probably incur that the clubhouse is the best for the location, certainly that's a commissioner's discretion on their review. So I'm going to put you down for a yes and a no. Anyone else with questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Well, Wayne had indicated that the clubhouse in that general facility would be a great. How much extra ballpark, I know you don't have any, but ballpark, how much would this increase the cost?
You know, we've got to put a cart barn in for a start. So that pulls the cart barn. But in terms of the cost, I couldn't tell it offhand because we haven't, we can't even look at the pointers to know where this clubhouse is. But we can, we've got some option. Yeah, but I don't, look, to be honest with you, it's insignificant because that area, what we do in this area is, we balance the dirt. It's not like we've got to bring dirt from somewhere else. The dirt is all there, it's all in place. We just move it around according to where we, in that, in those three passes. And I'm not talking, I think I've said this before, but that east passing is convinced property. But it's actually easiest to attain, it's a dozer, it's probably half a day or a day just pushing it there.
Well, I'm not, is this going to basically get expensive enough? Or you're telling me it's not going to be? I think it's a great idea to move it to the southeast corner. I think when all is said and done, that will in the long term work out.
I'll add a little bit more to that because we face that continuously, the using the area underneath the clubhouse for cart barns. If you don't build a cart barn underneath there, you have to build a cart barn someplace else. We've done those studies other than making sure we stay out of war with the floor underneath it. If we can elevate, you're going to have to build, the efficiency of building it is almost a wash in every time we've done that study. And you take advantage of the fact that if you're already building a plate, to build that structure, that slab structurally so you can put the things underneath it and you're getting quite a bit of space then, which you can use not only for the carts, but for other areas that you don't want to consume high-cost space with up above in the main floor.
George, stay right there. As far as, I agree with the southeast corner. I'm having problems with the maintenance facility being so close to where everybody's going to be congregating. So how are you going to protect that structurally for the maintenance facility?
Protected structurally. Oh, well, we're going to have to address that with circulation and together with our colleagues in the golf world, about getting in and out and addressing that with the exact location of it, how the buildings are positioned, how we get to them with, because another thing that you have to concern yourself with in the, in the building of these maintenance facilities is that there's pretty serious machinery coming in and out of that. So we are, right now, we've just basically put a placeholder and the real answer is that we do not have that answer yet, but that's sort of what we will be doing is once we know that the location. Where we are right now, where we are right now is that if we know where we want things generally to go, so this is our new site, and if we can decide what we want in the building, the maintenance facility, we know what goes in there, if we can decide what we want in the building, I think you addressed that, then we can get into the actual design of the building. Right now, this is just place savers, we can critique them forever. Do we have enough bathrooms, do we not have enough bathrooms? Is this, is that the right location for the kitchen, the dining, the conference room? We don't know because right now what we are trying to do is see what does this program look graphically? You remember I've been saying this since the beginning, that we're trying to do two things at once, program and design. And literally programs should be, the first thing to do is like, what do we want? So then we can decide how to house it and then we can critique things like circulation, location and sizes.
I like having a consolidation of the clubhouse on the left corner. I'd probably say we could also, but moving that over here, wouldn't that be free up some space on the northwest corner to move the maintenance facility somewhere on that gap, nine, somewhere? Just curious. How just somewhat the heavy machinery isn't where everybody kind of is and it's tucked away somewhere in the back?
We'd love to do that, we really would. We have a problem finding a place for a pump station right now. That's only twelve feet by twenty five. Because of views and, you know, the golf course, and the golf course is fairly tight. Put it in there, but to squeeze that, you know, it's a fairly large building at the end of the day. Not the building itself, the area around it, and taking into consideration the residents and how we service the golf course, I think this is probably the better place for it. I would like to squeeze it in somewhere, but then you end up squeezing it in and you have a facility which is far greater that's undersized and squeezed in.
Well, I feel like, I think, but you did put the clubhouse at the beginning because I think it's squeezed in.
Well, I think to be fair, you know, that's, it's a, it's a rambling, so it doesn't give you a true, if you look at that, if you look at that map, it does all look very close in there. But what's given us flexibility, and that's why I alluded to it earlier, that that maintenance facility where it's located now, where the maintenance facility is, where we've put it on the map there, this will actually move down here because we have flexibility with this, the short course. So that allows things to move this way, if it gets parked.
I mean, it has to be a little bit of a patient area as to a maintenance.
It wouldn't end up, to be honest, as you know, it wouldn't be right next to that. We'd have to reconfigure some of this, but not in a large sense. We maintain all those program elements, but we just, we need to shift things around. And that's why this is an conceptual plan, but it's also very difficult. And you're right, it does look all squeezed in.
And then in terms of parking, is there any kind of view, not parking?
Well, yes, I mean, we've got parking in where we've designated here. We do have overflow to this area here. And then we still, we still have an area over here as well.
Right.
That could, that could further overflow.
And then what, the first option had cart and skate, remember that single family house?
Yeah, there was, when we didn't have the clubhouse, we were considering different options. We always mentioned that we'd remove, but we didn't know whether to build a art facility in there, that place, or to locate it, if the maintenance facility is there, we could have, the old plan, we could have located the carts just for the east course with the maintenance. But when the maintenance center was on the west side of the road, we had nowhere to put those carts. Because that template, that small clubhouse was too small to build a facility. So that's why we created a bar with.
So right now, this option four, you have nothing planned for that single family house in the northeast corner?
Not at this point, but that is something that we would look to grow into. As I say, you know, whether it's, this is where we, you know, going forward. Even with George and then the detail to the clubhouse, although it looks detailed, it's really a beginning point for us. And that's why the representation from the district is so important. You sit down, you begin to make, need to make a lot of these decisions, that's where we live.
Do you think like having a superintendent on there, how is it, would be a good thing?
No, you know.
Whoever's running the facility?
Sorry?
Whoever's running the facility?
Right. I mean, you know, there's pros and cons to it. You should hire somebody and then six months, you hire it somewhere, it's not, you pay all that money. The old adage was hire a superintendent early so that he can see where the pipes are going. It's a laborer, a lot more sophisticated than that. Everything is GPS, GPS to put less than that. So we know everything. And I think, as you know, we tend to take advice through various consultants who are forward. With the process to where you don't have to have superintendent on board. I think, you know, that may come at a point to decide how to operate. There's onboard, but the infrastructure, superintendent doesn't like it from you. Whoever you appoint to manage it, they don't like the situation. So it becomes, it can become contentious.
Mr Chairman, in response to something that Aaron just mentioned, a gentleman came to my office today who incidentally with an offer or sale and purchase of the property that's located at the termination of Jeffrey Street on the east and the north side of the road. So that property has now become back available. The document that was delivered to me shows a seller of Lorraine Braven Trust. The address is fifty-nine ten Northwest Second Avenue. The price that this lady is seeking for a property is eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for that building and the parking facility that's located. And that would be a locator to chase to not only Jeffrey Street, but also the driving line to the east.
Is that the one we got praised versus?
That was the one we got praised for a lower.
If we might, I'd like to, I know that's an interesting news to add, especially in light of the report that we have from a traffic engineer indicating that our concerns at the abandonment of that road by the city, expressed that they did not abandon that road, except for the recent notice we've got from an engineer that said that Jeffrey Street probably could not be extended because of the two railroads that they'd have to cross and getting permission to do so is probably not going to happen. Everybody's seen that letter a last year happened. Back to the issue if we can to resolve the first issue. I think one of the things that's causing this difficulty is we move forward, we have to nail down the location of these projects. To get a financial data that's pretty solid for the project in the council, we have to nail down the concept of where we want the project. So the first idea we have to do is give our golf course architect an idea whether the southeast corner is going to work. And then we can start plugging in the other components and try and figure out what the pricing is going to be. And still an opportunity for us to review our C D Richard Ellis report regarding hotel location. If we do that post haste, because in further moving forward, we need to have somebody who is in project control on this representing our entries. And eventually ask Art the question on how we move that forward because we have to give these guys directions more quickly than what we're doing. We need the opening deadline of the fall of twenty twenty. So can anybody live with and recognize the value of having a clubhouse in the southeast corner? I mean, there is, nothing is going to be perfect, but this seems like the perfect location, consolidate, have one structure rather than two structures that we were talking about previously. Having cart storage underneath this, having other cart storage facility like previous course. So looking for some guidance here, and as is your architect, on this location. That's something that's a real difference to give the, I don't know, emotionally, Art?
No, I think it's his direction, but let's keep in mind, as we move through this process, there's probably going to be a few iterations of this plan. What you see on the wall is not going to be, your final product is going to be adjustments here, adjustments there. I doubt that they're going to be material in nature, but you are going to. but you are going to find certain things that are going to have to be acknowledged and considered as you move forward through the final construction design process, so that we can get a set of plans ready to be built and have this project to be constructed. But the very first step is citing it. And it would appear that the citing of the, what's called clubhouse multifunctional facility at the southeast corner is probably the most reasonable, the most functional, or the golf facility as whole. With the glove, eighteen hole station, the majority of the west side, and some of these other amenities, now on the east side, parking is a major issue, as is the traffic. We are placing the clubhouse at a traffic signal, which is helpful. And we also are planning a tunnel beneath Second Avenue, which likewise is going to minimize traffic difficulties and congestion with golf carts along Second Avenue as we go from clubhouse to the actual golf facility itself. So from my perspective, I'm carrying a boat. I can't see another location for clubhouse right where, you know, the park is located, southeast corner, second.
I agree. It, it seems, and just listening to commissioners with a few slight reservations, that this location seems to be the best fit for the proper design of the course. If the places are commissioned, I'll authorize the architect to afford that location as the assigned location for the clubhouse.
Chair, I was under the objection from the colleagues, commissioners, and the extent that there's a consensus on the record, considering that coming publicly, without a motion at this point, like you said, if it would issue the right direction.
Okay, just for the guidance, um, the, the other issue that was.
There was one thought on the hotel. I'm looking at the report, it just got through. In prior conversation, Wayne indicated that the hotel would be ideally on the other side. I agree, the clubhouse should be on the southeast corner. And we at least just leave, you know, the two point two acres that is northwest or kind of open for future use or consideration, if it could be rezoned for commercial development, whether it's a hotel or something else. So we don't consume that space, because what we've essentially done by doing this, according to this report, and maybe I'm mistaken, but it, it does value the property significantly. And, you know, we, we just want to preserve that land for commercial use.
Craig, were you talking about where the tennis courts are now, where the driving range was there?
You're not going to, you're not putting the clubhouse there, could that be a hotel, a future board, restaurant, or something useful for a community?
From a revenue generation standpoint, I, I understand that. I think we're all concerned about the performance, the financial performance of this, and it not be a drain, but to be an asset financially to us. I, I, I certainly have no objection to, to that, moving forward with that thought in mind. And I think, you know, that report's pretty thorough about the, the general area of this, whether it's the southeast or the northwest corner. I, I think you can consider either location for a revenue producing property.
Yep.
Wayne, does that satisfy your?
Sure.
Well, I think that's where I mentioned Phase One to the same with Phase Two. I think it's Art Edes.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Edes those numbers at the last meeting. It's ten and a half million dollars for all of the golf course related facilities. That's the eighteen hole golf course on the west and all of the golf facilities on the east side.
That's on the short course and the drive.
So economically for the golf course, Phase One would be looking at probably ten and a half million without anything for the clubhouse. And my suggestion is that you try to have prepared for the month of January, I think Wayne and I have talked about this, all of the construction documents necessary, at least to start the pre-qualification or end or bidding process for the golf course during the month of January. And so that we can get started on the construction of the golf course. And you don't have to do the clubhouse simultaneously with the golf course. They can be done consecutively rather than concurrently. And while we are in the process of construction of the golf course, we can be going through all of these issues related to what the clubhouse is going to be in the way of the size, what functions it's going to accommodate, and more importantly, what it's going to cost and when and how long it will take to build it. And I think those are all part of the, what I would call, the construction management process for the entirety of this facility. I want to be in the ground and further.
Just to go back to one of your comments, Craig, I think this process that we're currently undergoing now has no effect to the continuation of the golf course as we stand now. It's always been the intent that the golf course moved forward because of the lengthy process that the clubhouse and other facilities typically are. Everything relating to the golf, the design of the golf course is moving ahead as we speak and has done so since you said go with the layout and where things were going to go. But we are going to hit a roadblock there very soon because you've got to, we put the eighteen hole here or do we allow that to be the clubhouse? Or do we, where's, you know, if you're going to put the clubhouse here, you've got to, you've got to design the dirt to be in place for that clubhouse.
Yes.
And all of those, you know, everything's going, it doesn't have to be done, but it all has to be taken into account so we can design it one time. So you do have to move forward with the clubhouse. I understand not necessarily the lights, light fittings and furniture and that kind of thing, but we do need places. And by moving it forward, at that point, then the golf course can be completed in terms of design.
Does the maintenance facility even have a name? Does that have to be built?
No. So that has to be built.
The water and the lava?
Well, you know, that takes a while to get permanently approved.
So that's going to be after the golf?
Some, you know, we start the, I don't know exactly when the, when the construction will start, but the intent is to move that process forward once you tell us go. That's why we're, you know, so, does the fifth hole go here or does the maintenance center go there? So we're waiting on those things and that's why we need you to give us the okay. Then we can place the maintenance center and we can begin to outline what that's going to be. We can design around that, continue with the golf course design, and then at the same time, we can begin to develop costs because now we know where the maintenance center's going to go, what's involved in getting utilities today, all that kind of stuff.
So you don't need a maintenance facility to go along with the golf?
We do, we do, but the golf course will probably start before and hopefully the maintenance center will finish prior to the end, prior to the end of it.
Yeah, I will tell you now, I mean, based on my limited time here and everything else, we really need the maintenance facility as part of the golf course so we can estimate, we need to design. And I'd like to see bathrooms because those are buildings and they have to be designed. And I'll be totally honest, I expect that the driving range is lighted and I understand there's new lighting that will minimize, as far as that goes, the short course too. This all goes back to the revenue feasibility to pay back twenty-four million. So those are the priorities. I mean, I think the maintenance, I'm perfectly fine with the maintenance facility against the railroad tracks. Realize there's circulation issues that really need to be thought, then it may adjust some movements and things. But the, I'm afraid that we're spending too much time thinking about the clubhouse and it's dirt. And these are, we picked the location.
It's all related. It's a master plan. It's not a clubhouse plan, it's not a maintenance center plan, it's all related, everything, that's not a master plan, it's an integration of everything.
Agreed.
And that's why the city likes to see the entire master plan, not just what you're doing with the clubhouse or whatever. The problem with wasting time is having these meetings every two weeks and looking at this, looking at that. You've really, you know, that's why you've got to have a point person leading your team to work with our team, who's got to be part of the meeting so that when we sit in a room for a couple of hours and say, well, we'd like to do this, and the traffic engine says, we can't do that, they don't understand. We don't have to come back to you and say, well, you can't do that because of the traffic engine that tells us this. And so those decisions can be made, you know, well, you know, how that information gets back to you, I guess is your issue.
Yep.
But if you want nice bathrooms or you want basic bathrooms, whatever you want, we need to know and it needs to be fed to us so that the process can again move forward.
Okay, I think I've heard enough. I think Wayne is that we're trying to give you the basic layout of the course this evening so that you can move forward. We agree the maintenance facility is okay where it is, the southeast corner is okay for the clubhouse. We want to get the golf course going, we want to have the construction documents art set in January. The city needs to see our master plan, which will include the location for the clubhouse. We don't have to worry about the design and the concepts that's going in there, but let's walk away from the meeting this evening with giving you an idea as to where everything's going to go. And so I'm hearing your, hearing everybody comment, seeing they're shaking their heads, the design concept, where the maintenance building is by the railroad tracks, the clubhouse is in the southeast corner, the other parcels there that are open, we're going to leave those open for now and see what the future may develop. And then art, if the construction documents, we present the master plan to the city. We're going to need to have an idea as to what the cost for these other facilities too that Craig has mentioned. And if the maintenance building is not including it, ten and a half million, we need to check out that number because it's going to be done simultaneously.
Well, that's right, and we need to start work on all of these items. Not many people know this, a few do, but Wayne and I meet, what would you say Wayne, three times a week at six o'clock in the morning. We're good two to three hours every week. And we've been doing this for quite some time. And this is going to continue in order to get everything we need down on paper so that we can cross it up, get it to the city, start getting reviewed by city staff. But before we get reviewed by city staff, we need review by city council, get that approval that's required by the interlocal agreement, and then get with city staff and then start getting our construction drawings together. And while we're doing all of this, we keep an eye on schedule and we keep an eye on the cost.
Okay, Wayne, the big issue is we need somebody representing us to keep this project moving forward. Are you suggesting that you and Wayne are doing this three, four times a week?
Well, I'm not suggesting I'm going to do it, but I'm suggesting I'm willing to do it and it's a pleasure of the commission and I have no problem with working with Wayne and George and the rest of Wayne's team with Jeff Schnars, with Charlie Putnam, and getting this project completed, getting it completed on time and within a reasonable budget. We want a successful project.
I understand, and I enjoy seeing Wayne and George here, but there's no need for them to come here in two weeks. If we could get work done in between and get to keep the project moving because I sense it's stalling until they come here and get directions.
And I have no problem if you give me that task, we've given you reports in writing as any normal construction manager would do on a project of this type, and keeping you informed of costs and working with you on projected costs.
I seem to recall the Spanish River project that was done, it's the same way, wasn't it?
It was, I was the CEO on that project and completed it on time on seven million dollars.
Aaron, you had your end.
I just, this is just an idea running around with the other commissioners, something that might be going in there. Seeing that this is kind of a big task, I think, as like, let's say the golf course consultant. An idea, since in January we're going to kind of go out for executive director, remember Crane and I? Kind of move our into the golf course, golf course control and have I didn't know myself a three-year step up as a temporary kind of executive director to kind of run the other jobs and things that are going on in the day-to-day operations of the commission. And so we can go out and hire somebody permanent. I think I just wanted to put that out there and see if that's going to work.
Thank you. It's a, it's a bonshell, Aaron. I'm sure, I'm sure the thought has been given to that, but go ahead, Craig.
I kind of second the thought because I think Art expressed an interest in running the golf course, but what I'm hearing is have my role, I'm not meant to have to add another role, but I have one role, we've already paid him for six months in his current role as executive director. But the executive director role has a lot of things going on, just on all the regular stuff. And so that has to be addressed in its own merit. So I think it behooves us to, especially by having something we talked about even before I was on the board, so at some point, I think Art knowing the golf business is very important and focuses on that part of it, that would be best. Well, training, after where a search is done, we find a new executive director, cross training. Mr. Garcia, you had a question?
A quick comment, I'd be remiss if I didn't give you benefits other than hopefully a good design for your clubhouse and so on of experiences. It is not because I need to do a clubhouse tomorrow, thank God we're busy enough, that I'm just concerned, very concerned, when too much happens on one end of this project in terms of the golf course and you go a distance and without having a real understanding of the magnitude or the contents of what's going to go on the clubhouse site. And a little bit ago, we were talking about, you don't even know if you want to do this, this putting course or this or that and so on. Those elements are going to dictate a lot of what happens in their vicinity or near them. And if you begin the construction, let alone just the construction, the design of a golf course without addressing these items, a good part of the expense would be to go back and they have to redesign things because we didn't know where things were going in terms of the clubhouse site properly. That's a big enough expense that you'll be facing if you have to do it again. If you start construction or go deep into your construction documents and if you start construction of your clubhouse and these guys put in some heavy stuff, water, sewer, paving, drainage to the backend facilities, to the maintenance facilities and so on and so forth, and then the maintenance facility we established that it goes someplace, because that's where it should go according to where the club, they, the course is redesigned. And then we realize that, darn it, it would have been great another fifty feet north so that we could do something else with the clubhouse site and or the site. You're going to be taxed heavily for redesign, time and/or construction revisions later on when you didn't foresee these things, although they don't need to be done immediately in all one hundred percent. They shouldn't be hovering around each other so that the one hand knows what the other one is doing. If I did say that to you, I would think about it, I would say I should have said that to them so that you can take it into consideration.
I think that's what I was trying to get to, Mr. Garcia, is giving you a definitive direction on where the maintenance building is going to go, where the clubhouse is going to go, except for the interior components and how that's going to be and the size of it, so that you can get the golf course, the construction of the golf course going, knowing that these other components are going to be on those locations. That's, isn't that what we were trying to get across?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
One last thing, I'm going to stamp out your way. That's still too broad a rush at the moment. You need to know whether the clubhouse is going to be twelve thousand per feet and fifteen and what other things are going to be included on that site because they're going to affect what's happening around them. The fact that it's on the southeast corner of that intersection, that's a big step. What is going to be on the southeast corner of the intersection is an even bigger step.
I don't think we're prepared then to answer this question if we're going to have to go into the interior components and the size and scope of the clubhouse.
No, but there certainly are features that would be considered concurrently with the completion of the golf course so that there are no conflicts that develop during the course of the clubhouse.
All right, I understand, I understand. But, you know, we're talking about trying to nail down the size of the clubhouse without knowing what kind of revenue that is going to produce and what the cost of the clubhouse is going to be. At five hundred dollars a square foot, as Craig said, we're looking at seven million dollars. I don't know that we're prepared to do that.
That's right, we need to, we need to start to look at the scheduling and economics of the entirety of the project. I'm not suggesting that you reduce the clubhouse from twelve thousand to six thousand, but I think you have to identify the functionality of that clubhouse as to what you're going to do within that clubhouse and what purposes it can serve. I do not see the clubhouse as being exclusive for the golf course. I see portion of that clubhouse as being a meeting facility, a community facility, and a portion of that clubhouse for business meetings, not necessarily large conferences, sliding partitions like we have here at the Oak Room or the Maple Room so that we have flexibility. And we're certainly not going to impinge upon George's ascetical considerations in this building and will, will, will make sure that all of his suggestions are implemented because he is the architect. But there has to be an element of coordination of both of these features of this project because it is a project. It's a project of a golf course, it's a project of golf course amenities, and it's a project of vertical construction as well as having other issues in there concerning water, wastewater, drainage, all sorts of issues that we haven't even talked about in particular.
Okay, well, I was hearing Mr. Garcia say that we need to nail down the size of the clubhouse.
I think I'd wait on that just now until we get a little bit further down the road.
Okay, well, we just heard Mr. Garcia disagree with that comment.
No, 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 I don't want the answer tonight because there is no answer tonight. I encourage you, I encourage you to begin the process of determining the components so that they will give you eventuality in terms of the size and the things that go in it. Tonight, there's no way you will ever know because there's, everybody has an opinion. We're saying that I'm agreeing with Wayne. Funnel it to somebody, but get us information for your program. What would you like to, some people come to us and say, I'd like a really nice house. Really? That's all they have. Well, that's all you have, you want a really nice clubhouse.
Mr. Chairman, my, my, I'm there. We've been kicking this down, this can down the road now for a good number of months. I think what we need to do is decide what we want this golf course to be, okay? What we expect from it and set a timeline, a deadline, if you will, for coming to those decisions because we can sit here a year from now and still be in the same place.
See, we're trying to get to that point if you didn't notice earlier, you know? I think we came to a conclusion of what we wanted, where we wanted it. Now beyond that, we're not going to be able to decide that tonight.
Well, I know that.
Okay, but I, you know, I was under the mistaken impression that we needed to give them some idea, but because of putting it to maintenance building, we're satisfied with that, putting the clubhouse where it is, we're satisfied with that, that's all we can give tonight.
What we need to...
Should we also submit?
Maybe that's an idea, just follow us, submit an idea, you know?
Yeah, but I think I want to go back to Aaron's comment because I think we need a point person to be the liaison between folks and whether it's Art and Art Edes and that, and Neil, I performed Art.
Well, I think that's what your senior construction manager is going to give you. They're going to bring to you, whoever that person is, these questions that you don't need Wayne or George to be here every two weeks, that you're going to be bombarded probably on a daily basis with communications from your construction manager asking you at your weekly or bi-weekly, semi-weekly, whatever meetings we have, what your preferences are so that they can be related to these two professionals so they can complete their job. And that is the function of a construction manager, to get the project on schedule, to put in the project what the client wants and to keep it within the budget with the client as a step. If that's something you want me to do, I'd be happy to do it. I've been doing it for fifty years and I'd be happy to do it for another eighteen months. I'm not doing it beyond twenty-twelve.
I guess, let me think about it. I just want to go back to the design, I want to take the clubhouse, whether it's twelve or fifteen thousand per feet, we know who the location is, we know we need parking I don't know that we need to get too long down on that part of it. The other, there's another element of the whole thing we haven't even thought about. I think Wayne brought up a restaurant in there. I do believe that some kind of attraction has to put this thing all together in conjunction so there's no, you may come to conclusions, better to have a partnership, a public-private partnership for a restaurateur running a restaurant on site and they will have a heavy say to the design of the restaurant is because that's driving their business and it works for both of us. There's a lot of thought that has to go on that can be evolved over the next year. So to me, I would rather say, conceptually, we park that part with, we focus on driving ranges, the short course, the bathrooms that are out there on the nine holes, the front and back nine, and the maintenance facility, get those priced out and done because they're not in the price, we need that. And then we'll deal with, yes, you've got two and a half acres to work with, we're not going to mess with that. That's...
All right, Craig, I concur and I'm trying to get to that point, what I think I'm going to ask for is a motion, so that's, we have a motion that we can vote on and then we can move forward with this because, you know, we keep vacillating back and forth and I wish you to propose a motion.
There's two parts here. So one part is that design part, the second part I think we do need to address is giving Art direction.
Okay, let's do that second part, okay?
So the motion I have hand is for Wayne's group, right, the price policy group, to move forward with a detailed design of eighteen holes on the east course, on the west side, a driving range on the east side, a short course, and all of the infrastructure that is required for that. That includes the tunnel, that includes any bathrooms that are out on the golf course, any maintenance facility as well, which will also require bathrooms, and any ancillary buildings related to it. The clubhouse itself is, will be, will evaluate design of the clubhouse over the next year.
All right. Stop at the...
Stop there.
Okay, stop it, stop, stop there. I think summarizing your motion, what you're suggesting, what you're stating, because it was a long motion, more of an explanation than anything, that we direct the golf course architect to begin the design of the course so we can move forward with construction documents, with the eighteen hole course on the west side, the driving range, the short course on the east side and with the maintenance building and those cost components, those physical structures built into it. And we're not talking about the clubhouse at this point.
Including the tunnel.
Including tunnels, right. Aaron?
I'm just concerned because Wayne and Mr. Garcia are not, I'm shaking my head that this is not what you're developing. So I'm...
Well, if you're...
As tired as the professionals to tell us what directions we need to have, they're shaking their heads, we really know that's not right.
I tried to, I've tried to get this in a form of a motion based upon comments that I'm hearing from these two gentlemen. And so I guess I'm confused about what the issue is. What is the issue that you don't like about the motion?
Well, to, as George said, to design all these things separately is ultimately going to cost you.
Wayne, we're not designing the clubhouse.
I understand that, but that's the problem.
How is that the problem?
Because you need to integrate everything, you need to integrate everything around...
So you're asking us for the square footage, to decide the square footage of that?
So to Nigel, you're asking, and you've already, first of all, the golf course is already in the design. Secondly, now you've told us where elements are going to go. And now the next step is for you to appoint somebody within the faces of us and our team and then they begin to understand all of those issues and come back to you.
Okay, that was the second point we're going to cover next. So is that what you're shaking, you got about?
The first, the first term, not to do anything with the clubhouse.
Mr. Chairman, you cannot limit the design only to the golf course without giving consideration to where the clubhouse is going to be. Not necessarily the size of the clubhouse, but to determine whether there are any conflicts that are in the ground that are going to cause ultimate difficulty in the construction of that clubhouse at the site that you've determined. Whether the elevation of that building, which is high elevation, is going to be too high for ramping up pre-golf courses, there's all sorts of issues that have to be considered jointly that do not include the size of the clubhouse or what's going to go in it.
Mr. Garcia, I'm going to ask you, Craig, if you don't mind, you did not get a second to the motion. I'm going to see if Mr. Garcia can frame a motion that we can get our arms around that's acceptable to our consultants so we can move forward. Art?
Mr. Chairman, I would propose that you adopt a motion that you first direct the architect and the golf course architect and Mr. Garcia to consider their future designs based upon the location of the clubhouse on the southeast corner of Second Avenue and Jefferson Street. I'd consider that motion, number one.
Okay.
So that's in addition to what you and I talked about, you're going to give the, hang up.
Well...
I'm just saying, you're telling them to consider their designs as they move forward with the locations that you have cited, but then we'll see, that being the clubhouse, getting about the size of it for the time being. If the clubhouse is going to go on the southeast corner of Jeffrey and Second Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you put that in a form of a motion? Yeah, well, would you want to...
Okay.
Would you like to read that back?
We'd like to adopt a motion to direct the golf course architect and Mr. Garcia to consider future design based on... to consider future design based on the location of the clubhouse on the southeast corner of Jefferson Street and Second Avenue.
Okay, so, but now, but to me, that's one component of what we already talked about.
That's right, but yeah, that's one more.
Which one?
We're coming to ours.
No, no, I'm, I'm back to, that's not the only motion here. The motion is, the motion is 18-hole course. No, it's not number one, that's, it's lower in my priorities, because the motion to me is, design an 18-hole golf course with bathrooms on the line of the 18th and 19th side. But your facilities, design the facilities for, I'd like to see that, and completing them, the infrastructure required for all of that, including the driving range and the short course. That's what we're looking for. In addition, we're looking, we're directing the architect and Mr. Garcia to give consideration for a clubhouse in the southeast corner.
The first two you've already...
I think we're looking for discussion.
Okay, look, uh, Craig, I, with, with Art's motion that he suggested, Wayne, would you not be doing those kind of cost components in, in your design that Craig is looking for?
We then have the ability to understand where everything's going, and we can be given a cost.
Okay, so which will answer then Mr. Ernst's questions?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so... So, uh... We, we need a second to that motion?
Second.
Time. Okay, so, that, Commissioner Wright's a second, any further discussion? Are you all okay, Mr. Gordon?
I'm okay.
Oh, Moses.
Yeah, I'm sure the maker of the motion is embracing the suggestion by the executive director of the motion that you're actually voting on. The chair is comfortable with you all, and I would leave if you want.
Well, I'm going to ask the motion maker if he's comfortable, so we can move forward. I'm com- okay, all right.
I think the proper motion is second, and in concept, it's just prescribed by Craig. But I'll ask you then to give this discussion.
Right, okay, you're good. Gentlemen, you okay? Okay, so far.
I'm doing the script, I'm all set.
Pardon? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pose my sign, pass, and adjourn. Item number two, we talked about having a construction manager. We looked at Mr. Koski's, or his opinion on his desire to become a construction manager on this project. And Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Ernst thought well of that idea enough to bring it up. Mr. Koski, I'm looking for some input from you. If this is something that you'd like to move forward with, and as we move forward into January, looking for an executive director and pushing you into the construction manager on this course.
I would be honored to do so, and to work with whomever is selected as the ultimate executive director, be it in summer of January or tomorrow. Assist that person performing tasks.
Okay, and, and, Misses, once we pull the trigger on this, soon then we're going to need to have, give some thought to the interim, interim director.
Ms., Ms. Chairman, I'd be happy to continue that service until such time as you're elected. I do not think you would interfere with what I propose to do with Wayne and George.
Okay, then, beginning January, though, we'll go to an RFP, is that correct?
I guess I appreciate that, but Mr. Koski is already under contract as executive director. So I think what we're saying is, you were going to roll into the, the manager, construction manager role. And I would like to propose that Brianne be the temporary executive director, and start, well, you really need to be on-site reviewing time sheets or doing all the other work that is going on while we go out for an RFP, which may take a while, but Brianne understands all the process, and she would take that role of executive director while Mr. Koski is focused on the golf course.
I, I don't see that flipping switch, and that happens, of course. I mean, Mr. Koski has too much history locked up in the brain there that he could use to help the interim director.
He said he would need it.
Well, I understand, but I, I want to be sure we're, we're all clear about that. I mean, Craig, Craig was just proposing Brianne as the interim executive director. Without, you know, any further discussion, I'll make sure that we understand that Art will not be going away.
No.
So, okay, all right.
But that's in lieu of paying additional salary for, um, and, uh, construction manager.
I'm sure, I, I, I'm with you. Mr. Vasquez, are you available to that change?
I am available for that change until the next director is selected.
Uh, Mr. Gordon, procedurally wise, we have a contract that Mr. Koski has the executive director in pen contract. And in making this change, we need to give some consideration to contractual issue there. Are we okay? Do you need to review the contract?
I'd have to review the contract to see whether or not we need to potentially modify it to reflect this potential subset of change. It seems that your director is unable to implement these, would be able to implement this concept. I think the role myself, and the contract, I think that we're discussing with the director. This is really well.
Okay, and the, and Ms. Arms has indicated, not her head, that she'd be interested and capable of assuming that interim role. And so if that's the, the case, should we, Mr. Gordon, entertain a motion to move forward on this, or if it's by our discussion?
And there's one, because the public body moves through motions, as they say. A motion would be appropriately set to accommodate the public record for their intentions, which I think are clear to an extent. I don't want to do that contract, look at the obligations and responsibilities and the scope of work. And then perhaps we allocate some to others that certainly do the most to the benefit.
Yeah, so you're met, Craig.
I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Koski's role shifts to the construction manager role of the Boca National Golf Course. And Brianne Arms is elevated to the position of executive director, interim, interim, interim executive director. And at some point, we need to discuss the compensation adjustment board.
Subject to contract documents being approved.
Subject to contract documents being approved by the board.
Here goes, Art, this is the end, Mr. Secretary of Public Safety. Any discussion? Are you none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I pose my sign, pass, and adjourn. Congratulations, and thank you, Art. Thank you, Brianne. Art, oh, sorry, Steve, I would miss your presence.
I'm sure you would, I'm sure you would. Just very quickly, I'd like to wish everybody who celebrates, and even those who don't, a very Merry Christmas, a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. And thank you all for your input, it's much appreciated, especially when you laugh at my jokes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, yes, Art?
Sure.
Oh, I know, I know, I wasn't shutting down the meeting, Art, just letting Mr. Eno leave. Oh, sorry, okay. While we're on this discussion, Wayne, George, any, anything else that you need to add or have corrections now, or?
Set it up, please.
Okay, great, thank you, John. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the Boca National Pond interest payment. Mr. Tim Lake is going to report on that.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, for you tonight is the debt service payment for the city of Boca Raton. Uh, debt that was participated last February. The payment is for $246,000, $246,006. Uh, this is the interest-only payment, that's due January 1st of this year. You'll make another payment on July 1st, which will be principal, should be the remainder of $369,000. This is in quarters, because it does service against that, Mr. Steve, private city. You look at the... Do you question this motion? It's on your payment, let's put it on, just.
I guess we, everything in a public meeting moves by emotion, so I guess we need a motion on that? Do I approve the interest payment?
If your motion authorizes the payment, yes.
Further discussion? Are you none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pose my sign, adjourn. Next item is the Hatchery Park artificial turf business. I'll follow Melissa Dawson to session.
Set my papers down, that's all I can do. Um, quickly, we, obviously, as you know, we advertised bids for the artificial turf project at Hatchery Park. And we, the bids were received on December 10th, and we're doing it by 2:00 p.m. We received five bids for the project. Um, in your, in your folder, there is a, or I'm sorry, on page nine of your packet, there is a review of the five bids that were received by the name of the company, by the price that they bid, and by the products they used for all the pads, the turf itself, and for the organic info. Also, in your folder, there was a, I didn't have it in time, I put it in the packet on Friday, but in your folder, there was a review of the bids by our architect and engineer. And the low, the five bidders were BURK Construction, CSR Heavy Construction, Plata Designs, Pellet Construction, and Palage. The bids ranged from anywhere from $3.88 million to $5.15 million. The two low bids of BURK Construction and CSR Second Construction is ones that I would recommend that we consider. And I'll go quickly, that Plata Designs was basically non-responsible, as they did not include a bid bond, nor did they deal with any of the specifics of what products they would use. So there was a lot of items that were missing from those bidding packets. Pellet Construction and Palage have met all, but we do believe that BURK and CSR is able to fill the needs of this, and therefore, with a lower price would be a better use of taxpayer money. So narrowing that down, the recommendation between BURK and CSR, between the two, we have a positive reference from our architect engineer on both of those, with the BURK having done a park at Wesson, and CSR has done Mills Pond. Both of those, they worked closely with our architect engineer. Both the architect engineer were happy with both of those construction companies. The price difference between is approximately $100,000. One of the concerns with BURK is BURK did not term in their bidding, their adendum acknowledgement form by the deadline, the 2:00 p.m. deadline, and the bid, the acknowledgement form was not coming in time. They had a representative at the opening, the representative left. Bids were due at 2:00, the adendum acknowledgement was sent to me via email at 4:51. So they did not get that in in time. There also is, one of the other criteria, one of the other value, evaluation factors that we put in there is, is any existing litigation. As of right now, BURK has eight open, ongoing litigation, mainly, a couple of them are per damages. And then the rest of those are mainly for failure to repay some accusations, I should say, failure to repay their subcontractors. They also have, on top of that, eight, 12, within the last five years that were closed. So 20 litigation claims in the last five years against them. In addition to that, it was pointed out, some irregularities that we would have to make a phone call on for BURK Construction, as some of their unit prices didn't seem to match up. And CSR overall had a smaller unit price, which, in my opinion, we certainly, it was, we're going to try to keep change orders as low as possible, but we all know with construction projects, change orders happen. And if your unit price is lower, when you go to address some of those change orders, the likelihood of the payment loss is going to be less with a lower change order, uh, unit price. So based on that, my recommendation would be for us to consider BURK as CSR. And based on the reasons that I've outlined, I would heavily encourage the team that please consider CSR way of construction.
Thank you, Melissa. Pardon, in the construction industry, do we know what kind of litigation this is, Melissa? Were they just, uh...
Yes, I've outlined here, and as I mentioned, I think there are the ongoing ones. There's one, two, three actions for damages. And then there's fail, prod, and failure to pay suppliers, authority, subcontractors. And this is all based on information they provided us. One of these has been demanded for trial, has been executed.
Is there any litigation with CSR?
No, there is not.
No. And how is it, on those pond, are you doing now, in terms of people that are...
Everything that I, I have personally not visited the park, I will say, but everything I've heard from the architect engineer, they completely happened with that project, and it went well.
And then the difference, their, their turf had and their organic component is exactly the same. What's the difference between the turf ones using versus the other?
There, what it was, Aaron, is there were seven different types of turf that the architect engineer outlined. So there's going to be small differences in them, but what they did is we had seven firsts that were acceptable. I can't tell you right now, Tom, that any specific differences in those two firsts. They're both high-quality firsts, and they wouldn't have been listed, because they were, there were only seven firsts in the country that were recommended by, by this architect engineer, but they both are one of those. I don't have, I'm unfamiliar with sprint turf, I do not have a familiar area to act global, so I don't feel like I can give a fair estimation there. I've had positive sprint turf, but I, I don't know anything about global.
I need a, um...
Motion?
Yeah, a motion to go with CSR, second.
Discussion, yeah.
Um, let me just ask the options. If we do not approve CSR, any of these right now, could we push this project for one year?
But, but, same thing, Kurt, you know, I was probably after we did that, though, that if you went out for one year?
Look, I realize that...
So, what if, what if... If you were to defer it, you'd have to actually defer the project, and then the whole prices.
Okay.
Much longer.
Let me tell you, let me explain my thought logic on it. It's not that I don't want to do it, I do think it is something we've all agreed to after much discussion and, and history of, are we going to make? I'm done with the decision, I understand the decision, how we got there. My concern is more from a financial perspective, that we initially started with the project thinking it was going to be more of a $3.1 million project. We budgeted for $3.75, okay? So that's what we have in the 2019 budget. You're already 200, roughly 250,000 beyond the budget. And we have no margin for error. If we go by our budget that we approved, we're saying we have $1.6 million left over. We're embarking on many projects, and the number one priority for the district really is the golf course at this point. That, those fields are up and running. I'm just concerned that we do not have the funding yet for the golf course. And if we start on this project, and if it, it's already over what we budgeted and expected, if it goes significantly beyond that, we are in big trouble. So it would be safer to defer this whole project until next year, just to wait and see. My last question, though, related, is how long can we defer the timing? Maybe till after, at least till after the board meeting, or the city meeting?
Art? Uh, if it is of any comfort to the board, I believe MERV is $1.3 million that City will be delivering to us.
Yes, but we did forecast that number.
It's in our forecast.
We forecasted in the, the prior year budget, yes. We'll get the funds, but we did forecast that, so...
In the prior year budget?
We forecasted coming into the prior year budget. So, you know, the reserves that we had brought forward included those funds.
That's not in our, our current budget, though?
It's not, it's in the reserve number that came forward.
So the reserve number for that last year came forward in our budget for...
Yes, we, I had, I had anticipated that we would receive the $1.39, the Beach Reunishment Fund's coming back yet.
So, well, we haven't got it, it's in our revenue projection.
It's in our revenue, reserve projections from last year, coming forward to this year.
I, I might also mention that we do have, and Brianne and I have discussed this, we went over the park, we did discuss it with Michael Cowherd as well, that there was in the budget, from the information... we did discuss it with Michael Cowherd as well, that there was, in the budget from the information MERV that you had sent to me, so there was $200,000 budget for the Gumbold and Bowmax are planning, and we only need 100,000, so there's 100,000 there. And then there was also, the $200,000 for planning for phase two, but normally was left in the budget, and on August 20th, the board had voted to take that out of the budget. It was left in the budget, so there's an additional 300,000 right there.
Art, what's the, if we have a contract for this project at a cost of 3.9 million dollars, where, where would the cost overruns come in? Did they, they miss something that, uh...
Well, it's hard, it's hard to anticipate, but it's a fairly straightforward project. The bulk of the cost is material, so the material price should be pretty well established. The actual site work is minimal, grading and so forth. The only unknowns that I would possibly consider that you may encounter would be some utility lines that we were not aware were in the ground, that would have to be located. I don't think it would be a, a very large number. We have relocated most of the utilities. I think the engineers have done a good job getting it ready for bid. I wouldn't anticipate a, a large cost overrun. Maybe a 10% contingency probably should cover you in a cost overrun.
Mr. Chairman, on the estimation, I will tell you also, follow that up. There is in the packet that the architect engineer sent us, they do a summary, and the first column, or six columns within the first column, they show what they were estimating, so that you can compare to where it came in. And it looks like one of the areas of 100,000 dollar underinvestment, in some cases, was actually the playground grass, the playground grass, the synthetic turf itself, was, um... Was actually, well, that was underestimating, I'm sorry, but there's, you can see a number of different areas in here, the, that, that they will show, so that you can re-engage by either, there's 18 different price points there, and it will show what they estimated the price to be compared to what the prices came in actually to look like.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think anyone needs to be reminded of some of the public input that we've had on this issue of artificial grass, artificial turf over the past couple of years.
And one question for Fred, on his, we may get Fred one here? We have nothing budgeted for the golf course for 2019 right now. That means we would have to budget over millions of dollars for the construction that we don't get from the city in 2020, right?
We would be borrowing those funds.
Then we would just be pushing it further, or are we...
Well, we, we would, as soon as we get an handle on the dollars, we will immediately go to the marketplace for funds.
My concern is, we don't have, we, if this is our priority, the golf course, this golf course project, yeah, it's, the reason I'm saying we push it is that the fields are already working, they're using, you're starting a project that you don't need to start right now. And if you get into a utility project, and if the 10% overrun is 400,000, so we budgeted for 3.7, we don't even have our full golf course design and everything. I'm just saying, that is a good cushion number to manage everything with the golf course, because I do believe that is our, our first priority. If we don't, it's fine, you can, we can go ahead and start this project. It will progress through, but you could run the risk of doing a new overrun. And we need to be fully aware that something will have to give. And you're going to be in a very difficult situation if you do not have any reserves. So why put yourself through the pain of, of having multiple construction projects? We need to finish Swim and Racket, which is already ongoing. We have the golf course, which is a very big thing, many components of it we need to spend our time on. It'll be far easier, you're not trying to deal with this one right now, or anything else that is not on the plan. But I, I appreciate the fact that we've done a lot of work, we know the public input, we know the desire to do it. It's four, it's going to be four million dollars. Of which we have 3.7 budgeted, and other projects that are coming on to cover any overrun.
There's no negotiating, right? Somebody can't come back and say, oh, can you do it for three percent?
We have a good argument.
It's solid, it is.
It's non-negotiable, it's not negotiable.
I might go with the others, and they said, have these tennis courts, and that's at Hatchet Park, and if you can send me...
So, the tennis courts are a safety issue that we know we need to address, for the, kind of trump something that is...
You know, it's just, you know, you've discussed this with the board, and the board, and they're very...
We didn't budget enough for it. Well, I have to tell you, me and Craig and Aaron, since through the two and a half years of Neil biting, and some pretty tough discussions with the folks that are, you know, looking for this project to be completed, and, and Steve was talking about kicking a can down the road. I think this was probably about four years ago this discussion began. I'm, I'm going to support the project, and hopefully I don't have to hear from Craig saying, told you so. I won't say, told you so, I'm just going to go.
There's 300,000 not in the budget, or in the budget, that's going to be moved over to reserve.
I don't know whether there's anything else there that, you know, we could defer our budget part, if we got into any kind of difficulty, I didn't examine the budget that closely, but I know that in the past we have, whether it's equipment, whether it's, you know...
We, we still have capital light in reserve, and we always have a $2 million operating, so...
Okay, so... I'm going to call a question, shall we, Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the extent that the majority of the mission supports this motion, just two quick things on the record, if we come back hopefully, not for argumentation, but also for privacy, the number one is, there are some discretionary bases in progress, you can lay it in front of the others. Your bid documents, of all, tells us that if you wish a commission, to go to number two bidder, as the most responsive and most modest bidder, you're legally able to make that decision as well. To put it on the record now, to the extent that you're comfortable at least knowing that that is an option legally to make, why don't you number two bidder, as we can...
Well, then, to make that statement clear and understand, Mr. Coste, that the low bidder was not completely responsible to the bid documents, so we are in good shape if we were to go to the second bidder, is that correct?
That's correct, that's discretionary.
Okay.
It would have to be an abuse of the discretion set aside.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so your last clear on that. Aaron's motion is to award the project bid to CSR Construction, the second bidder, due to the, I guess we'll just end it right there, to the second bidder. And I'll call a question, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Posed.
Aye.
And the director of reflect, the vote was three in favor and one opposed.
I have a question, thank you, that is, thank you.
Are you talking about the swim and racket center?
Well, I'm doing the one right, I leave it south swim and racket center.
Since you have the microphone, go ahead, if it's all right with the mission, we'll just have Melissa microphone to talk about. I have number five signage.
On page 16 of your packet, there is some items that we need to address at the Swim and Racket Center, or requesting to address at Swim and Racket Center. Right, right now, with one of those assigned, there are no room numbers, or room identities on any of the rooms over at Swim and Racket Center, so obviously, when we go to do assignments, or when we go to do workovers, et cetera, we need to go to put room numbers. So it's simply request a new signage, to put room numbers, and then put the address plaque on the exterior of the building. And you'll see that we received three quotes. My recommendation would be go to fast signs, it's the lowest quote at 1,833 dollars and 85 cents. In addition, I'll go over them all online, and you can decide whether you approve them, or just approve them individually, or as you approve. Next, are, are, plenty of addresses, the windows at the Swim and Racket Center. So we have a proposal to put some solar shades on the lower level, and then put some blinds on the upper level, all these things that we talked with the representatives from Recreation Services with the city, to make sure that we were in line with, and wanted the same thing. The bids on those was the blind, was the low bid was blind factor at 4,050 dollars.
Let me just talk right through here, Melissa. Sam, should we do individual motion on these?
Just to cover what, please.
I think we're going to do, have to do individually, Melissa. So the first item is the address plaques on the doors, and the fast signs is the lowest that we, we perceive.
Rooting the date of fast signs at 1,833 dollars and 85 cents.
And all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign, actually, I'm going to be, I have a number two.
My recommendation would be to engage blind, the blind factor, a low estimate of 4,050 dollars in order to address the need for solar shades and blinds at Swim and Racket Center.
Engaging blind factor, that would be 4,050 dollars. So we can come to solar shade, we can honor them, and...
Yeah, but they're all the same total face, yeah.
Question? Very, now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign, motion, can I speak?
The last item is, in functioning over there, we have some feedback from some individuals, where we do not have the push button activators on the entrance doors there, to help people with their accessibility ease. So the quote is to install three push button activators, one on each entrance door in this Swim and Racket Center. The low price there is Stanley at 9,770 dollars. The other venue, and I'm glad they came in, because Stanley is also the person that maintains and does the repair on all those doors for the Recreation Services and for the city. So they're already contracted to maintain it, so this way, they can install them in as well, and they're also the low bids, so I would recommend Stanley.
Is that two doors?
No, that's total for all three doors. Again, it's 9,770 dollars.
Are there ADA issues that are involved here with that?
I don't, Mike, I will say correctly to that, we were going based on the fact that we have some client, some clientele, and some members in the swim club that have complained that they're having trouble seeing the doors when they have items assessed that help them walk, and they're being, and the doors are a problem for them.
So that's not something that's required, right, or is it that we...
I, I don't want to speak to that, because I don't know that, I've found my head, so I don't want to misspeak. Mike may know that.
It's, it's not a code requirement?
It's not a code requirement? It's not an ADA requirement? Just that we can...
The doors are, the doors have angles, and as long as there's a minimum amount of pressure, as long as the access, the space in front of it is adequate, and the mistletoe and actuators are not required, it's just something that is provided, you know, for, if you like that, of course.
Most of this is, I know, the entrance door, the main entrance, and then the door to the, where's the third one?
The door to the tennis courts. So you have the entrance, and you go up to the tee, and then go, there'll be either tennis or...
Okay, all right.
So the inside and outside?
Yes.
I think it's necessary, I mean, I think if there's an oversight, I'll have to have it on there, because the stores are, it's still fairly heavy for someone who's elderly, and it makes a lot of sense to include it. Make a motion. Make a motion to approve access doors.
Question? Very, now, all those in favor say aye. Aye, close, like, sign, hash, two, nine, like...
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, we have you up next, Mike Bussara, Swim and Racket, or just order, or just change order, or not?
Item number four. Skip over that, Craig. Oh, okay. Allison's right way up the podium.
My name is Mr. Coste, this is Cory, Mike Bussara, and we have construction manager for the Swim and Racket Center, some other projects. So I'm going to talk to you about the post-change order number nine for the Swim and Racket Center. The total is 160,000 dollars. The 7,000 of it is for a request from the fire department to air-condition and grade their fire control room. 9,000 of it is permit fees. 12,000 of it is TCO fees that go to the city. And there's 132,000 dollars left in the change order that is related to the playground areas in the rear of the Swim and Racket Center. The contract that went out to the, the general contractor excluded this area, and it was intended for this work to be designed and bid out and constructed separately. So the 132,000 dollars is left. It includes landscaping, irrigation, concrete formwork, stairs, ramps, railings, gates, and other finishes. So I could go with, so what you have is a summary. I also have painful details on all of the items and the separate costs per, per item, but I'll do however, I'll explain this to whatever you see fit.
What happens if we don't choose not to do this? What has to be done under this list?
All of it has to be done.
Including the playground?
Well, we've already, well, I should, I would, playgrounds have already been started. So these are all of the features that go around the playground. So we've already contracted, paid for the playground itself, that all of the materials in all orders, design order, the water sewer, electric is all going through it. So the, this is for, like I said, this landscaping that goes around, it's the earthwork, the fences, railings, the concrete formworks for the, so a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Moonlock came, and he presented the, the details of that playground area, where we had terracing, elevation differences, and there was also discussion about any railings and fences for, for child safety. So all of that is included in this design and...
I have one, Mike, to be honest with you, I'm really disappointed with the whole project. And, I mean, it initially started at 3.9 million, and now it's 5.3 million. We know that 700,000 was for the demolition, but the ongoing cost of this project is just beyond belief. And it's a simple building, in fact, two simple buildings with an operational non-functionality. You have to go through one building, get into the other building. The designer, putting the playground behind the swimming, you know, area, which is, conceptually sounds nice, but this is not a park, this is, you have more, your clientele is an older group. I mean, who's in the pool? So, that, which is fine, so then that requires someone to be watching over the playground, the way it's designed.
No, because there's a, there's a messy area, and it's going to be surrounding with playground.
Now it is, but it wasn't thought out when you were doing it.
Well, we need sure of that, I think.
Well, my, I'm not, I'm, we haven't got, another component of this with elevations that has to... The last meeting we had, there was a discussion on, we have already, there was discussion around the elevation of the maintenance facility. Should we expect change order number ten for that?
Yes. That won't be nearly as elaborate as this, because it doesn't involve child safety, and terracing, and stairs, and ramps, and railings, and gates. So that is, just an element of that that's going to, it's going to answer some safety questions we had around the building. So it's going to be just a paving area for our rail, and that's it. So we've talked to the, talked to the staff, the designer, and the engineer, architect, and so we're just going to cut off the building and blend it into the driveway that they had all along. So that's not, so we're going to scale that back to just blend into the operational, the operation the way that they used it before. So that's not, so we're gonna scale that back to just blend into the operational, the operation, the way that they used it before. So that, so Mr. Garcia had a great point that he made earlier. When you defer some of this work intentionally for later date, you want to have him to somehow fund these additional costs. So the fact that it wasn't in the original bid was intentional. And so I did, I've gone through, I've gone through the types of changes, and I can tell you that unforeseen changes have only been three point six percent of this project. The design changes have only been one point two eight percent of this project. And added, things that were added after the fact, after the, the contractor's left, is about thirteen percent.
Mike, I'm gonna make this question. You just said, you know, design, we were given, we didn't, we didn't do the design documents ourself. So, I mean, there's no way that we would have had any knowledge of the fact that these were not built into those bid documents, correct? I mean, we, we were given the project as a completed project, and we approved that based on a certain sum. So the cost overruns are not our fault.
I don't know that there's, there's fault here. If when, you know, like with the, for example...
Well, here's what I'm saying, you know, maybe if they had been built in there originally, we would, we would have had a higher bid number. Like the safety, I mean, but those should have been foreseen. I guess that's what Craig is, and then, and then, you know, and then the fire department coming in now and saying, you know, we need to insulate there. I mean, why wasn't this all brought forward in the beginning? And we've had, we've had other lines that we've had to put in, run lines that were...
And maybe Mr. Moon, he was part of the design, so maybe he can add in a little more architect.
Sure. Anything, double, okay. I think what Mike was saying is that as this project evolved, we had decisions that were made along the way. Just what you don't want to go off course. The subject of the playground area was talked about in totality, and that specifically. So we conceptualized a playground wet, dry, in conjunction with community building, but the decision-making of the community building left the train station before the playground. And the playground was something that needed further refinement. We needed to get exact qualifications and specifications, and then we needed pricing. So it wasn't that it was ever excluded, it just wasn't attached to the decision-making of the advancement of the playground, or of the community building. With regards to changes in the back, once we got all the details of the playground sorted out, we had considerable elevation changes that were matched by Chuck Steakhouse, the existing terrain. And once we got everything cleared that way, we could then ascertain what we could do, where we could site. There's been considerable, I would say, collaboration from the contractor, Mr. Bussiera, our team, to try to reduce costs. What was the best solution at this point to reduce the cost and achieve the goal? And we're still pursuing that when you're dealing with existing conditions. The upcoming situation, if you will, of maintenance building is the same. We took out a trailer, some lapidated, armored bars, and we're left with existing conditions that are only known after we clear everything. And then we have to tie into some of the existing operational conditions. How we do that carefully requires some give and take, and it only can occur at this point.
Right, I think the, the safety issue around the playground shouldn't have been included around the playground, like it was designed, no. I mean, you, you...
The original enclosure, if you will?
Yes.
That enclosed the entire pool?
I mean, it's next to the pool, so, no, no, they like, it closed the playground itself, the fence around the playground so that kids wouldn't have access to the pool.
Within the confines of the pool, you're required to have a safety area for the entire pool area. This just happened to expand, so if there was no playground there at all, the public can basically access the entire pool area, which is surrounded by a safety fence. The commission's desire to have further safety is what opted, we call it additional aids and safety needs. And which we think is a good idea, but it was not a requirement at that point.
Right, I just thought, I didn't think that was an additional safety requirement. I thought that was something that should have been designed into it, because the playground was next to the pool. I just thought it would have been included in the original design of the playground, seems.
Mike, what was the cost, by giving direction to you, the fencing and safety issues? What was the design cost of the, and the structure cost as well?
Well, just the fencing itself was thirty thousand.
So we had to design, Mr. Moon, had to design that in order to get approval, to get our CO, I guess, or not?
We're not at a CO point yet, but for the CO, that will, it'll be part of the plan, and then will become a requirement of the CO.
So back to Craig's question, what, if anything, adheres work that hasn't been done, we don't have to do? Or is this invoice for a hundred, change order for a hundred and sixty thousand of this that we're gonna be able to do, to get this project completed?
Yeah, well, like I said, it includes the design all around the playground. There's elevation changes, concrete work, you put less landscaping in.
So what was that, what was that cost figure for the, for the design work, and the elevation change around the playground?
That's not, I mean, I, I mean, look, I come back to, look, I appreciate your design. How much were you paid when we started this project? What was the initial?
I don't have that contract yet.
Okay, well, I think it's pretty significant, because this year alone, we spent sixty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars on architectural design work changes for this year. That's after the project has been underway. So there's been a lot of changes, and that's not your fault, we're asking you to make those changes. Some of the most significant ones in the last couple, the last month. I think, you know, from my perspective, it's so overrun of where it was started, that it's just a disappointment. And there's some operational challenges there. And so, I think, to me, if, there's some cost, I think, like what you're saying, that we already spent some money for design, playground, and some other items. Is that correct?
Playground, all the playground equipment has been purchased.
So the equipment has been purchased?
The whole playground, the whole playground facility. What it sits on is what we're doing, the patio.
So it's a hundred and sixty thousand to put down the playground facility, essentially, and the material around, and, and the fire safety room. Is that correct?
Hundred and thirty-two for the construction, and, um, for the employees, and a set of thousand dollars for fire department.
Okay, so that takes care of that. But can we, in totality of the whole project, what else is there? Can we stick with the design that was submitted to the city, permitted, and it started our construction at the tennis center? A separate building and the main facility. Can we stick with exactly what we did and let them build it and be done with it?
The pro shop, yes, absolutely. The maintenance building, we lowered it, and...
Why are we lowering it?
So that there will be a less severe drop off right outside of the building. That the, the issue is, right outside the building where the maintenance people will be using their equipment, they, there's very severe drop off.
I understand.
So lowering the building a foot gave us a lot more flexibility with grading, it also helped with drainage, it helped with elevation changes. The lowering the building was a great advantage to blending it all in, especially blending it into the circulation and the access that the U can.
Okay, they'll get roughly the same square footage as what they...
They'll get exactly the same square footage.
Okay, so...
The only thing I think we're gonna add there is, alright, is concrete and guard there, just to keep them from, you know...
But when you do all these things, that's kind of easy now as an example, is there not, I thought there was an engineer on this project from the beginning that was measuring, you're looking at elevations, that's how we start these things.
There is an engineer.
And where is he tonight? He messed up, messed up his numbers, and you think he'll write the first time, and he's gotta redo them?
I'd kind of suit for that. Not unlike any, you know, renovation project, there are fixed things that you know about, and other things that come later. A lot of that deals with the topography. You're facing considerable amounts of that at the golf course, where you're dealing with infrastructure that ties into existing conditions. The more in-depth work that you do upfront, the more you would have a better forecast. Some of it is impossible, because you have buildings that are sitting there, you have vegetation. When all of that gets excavated, you're dealing with the existing conditions. So there's some level of, you know, I'll call it contingency, that should go into every renovation project for these kinds of things. In a perfect world, that maintenance building would be sitting on a conforming line. It's not. And we're making the best of it based on existing conditions, the way it's been operating for thirty years maybe, and how we can connect to the existing facility, accessibility, ADA, functionality.
There exists, there are contingency numbers that you should anticipate going through with the projects.
That depends on the magnitude of the work. You know, typical contingencies in our unit were from ten to twenty percent. The more broad and... Based on what we're dealing with, the limited conditions, you would have probably been comfortable doing somewhere between ten and, say, twelve percent. In that, and that's some of the things that we just couldn't resolve. Some of the things are designed to, we haven't yet made the decision on the playgrounds. That's not a contingency, that's a, that's a, like, a deferred decision by ownership of the client.
Comment, Mike?
Yes, and so we don't bring you these numbers, we don't just bring you these numbers straight from the contractor. You know, this has gone through several iterations, iterations. It started out at a hundred and ninety-five thousand, went down, you know, and Doug and I worked with the contractor to make sure that we weren't duplicating anything, overpricing anything, and doing it at the minimal cost possible. So it went from a hundred and ninety-five, went to a hundred and sixty-something, and averaged out to a hundred and sixty. And a hundred and thirty of that is actual construction. So it doesn't seem like, you know, it doesn't, and it seems like a lot, but there's a lot of work in getting this viewed in this format. You know, we talked about doing a contingency on the field project, the turf project, at ten percent. We had no contingency on there. If I had ten percent contingency, I wouldn't have been talking to you all of this time, I wouldn't have been able to use the contingency. So like I said, we're at, we're at twelve, and, and there was a seven hundred thousand dollars of it was that, was for the demolition that we had to go. So it, it's, it's as tight as we could get.
So you are gonna come back with a second change order related to the tennis center? Of the elevation changes?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, the pro shop, it didn't include, in the design, it didn't include local features, so only phone and data and wifi access, cameras, so it'll be something there, but something not here where it's significant to exist. And with the, the maintenance building, there's gonna be some elevation safeguards that will go into that. So you will have a couple more change orders. I can't, I can't say that you won't. It's just that's the, you know, what the, like, this...
You anticipate... I'm just trying to get an idea of the whole project. You anticipate that now it'd last a quarter million dollars?
Absolutely.
Less than a hundred thousand?
Yes, please.
If we beat you up so badly, then less than seventy-five thousand. You know, I think to Craig's point, and our consternation is that, you know, every dollar that we spend over in what we had planned on, you know, causing us problems in other areas too, it's frustrating to have these continue. The last project we did was a science playground, and we thought we'd learned a lesson on that with the cost overruns we had with that, and I, I don't know, but we're just gonna have to figure out a better way to do our budgeting, and the contingencies is necessary to do that, rather than thinking that we've got bid and this is it, you know, but, you know, when you're starting in design costs that are being created by the fire department or whomever in permitting, that does cause us some issues that we wish had been thought of in the beginning. Mr. Aaron?
Any question? It says twenty-one days out of the construction schedule. When was it supposed to be done?
It was, it was January, the initial, when we first got the permit. And I had a permit scheduled, and I, a permit was issued when I clocked start, and a permit was issued, and I believe January twenty. So this is gonna take us into, uh, hopefully, the, uh, month.
Can the facility open without the, the hammer? Do you think there's, like, was the fire room done, or are we into the facility?
The fire room is done, the facility is open, so we're working on a first certificate of occupancy. So the building department has cleared the premises or occupancies, all the rest of the functions are working. So we just, we keep that playground area segregated, separated from the public until it's finished construction.
Permit of the community center is open for eastbound public?
Absolutely.
Got a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Aaron, I don't know whether we have any other questions for Mike, or do we need to move this item forward with a motion? Pass or fail? I don't hear a motion.
Reluctantly, I'll make a motion to pass the change order for a hundred and sixty thousand.
Gordon, can I second that motion, Mr. Aaron? Pass the catalyst, here. Pardon?
Pass the catalyst.
Aaron is second in the motion. Any further discussion or questions? Here you go, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Mike, Doug, thank you for your presentation. Hopefully, the next time, when it's under fifty thousand, we'll add to that's a mission. The next item, we have item number six, is a report on a joint meeting of the city council, bringing that any potential...
Quick, okay, no, that. First, I just wanna thank you all for your wonderful insight, and also Mr. Cassi for all the leadership and... As far as the county with City Council goes, we touched on it briefly tonight. They are anticipating a report, a proposal from us, as far as the on course design and what we expect from it, as far as the management contribution. Once they have that, in like two weeks to review it, and they will give a favor to me with us.
So what does that mean in terms of timeline, Mr. Cassi?
Well, I think we will be able to have the report and plans ready for them within two weeks. And we'll be ready to schedule a meeting shortly thereafter. Now, the question that's going to be asked by city council is, what do we anticipate borrowing? Or how much money do we need from, would like to have from the city? I'm not sure the city's going to quote, "give us" any money. It doesn't appear that way. We've asked them before, and there's been a very conspicuous silence in their response. So we're looking at what do we need in the way of borrowed funds to complete the construction of the golf course. Now, I would say to you that we are ready, almost right now, to say to the city that we will need approximately ten point five billion dollars to build all of the golf course on the east and west side of Second Avenue. That does not include any funds for the clubhouse. But I think our desire is to get the golf course up and running. So I would go to the first meeting of the council, showing them what we're doing... So I would go to the first meeting with council, showing them what we're doing with the eighteen old golf course and the amenities on the west, on the east side, with a request for ten thousand five hundred, ten million five hundred thousand. Subject to giving me a couple weeks, just verify that with Wayne.
And Mr. Coste, I recall from the discussion that that did not conclude the cost for tunneling, which should be part of the golf course. And Mr. Brainwhite said that the destruction on the maintenance ship, that this...
Listen, I would like to wait a little bit before I make that commitment. I know what the estimate is for the tunneling. It is one million dollars. But we were told initially that we couldn't tunnel, and we found that we could tunnel. So I'm not quite sure whether that one million is a good number, or whether it's purely just luck out of the air. So let us get those numbers down a little more precise, and get some numbers down precise for the, for the golf course. And I'll have that for you in approximately two weeks for the final set of plans.
Okay, well, I think that's what we're looking for, is a final number, ask the city on what we need tomorrow, on the inclusive to give it a portion.
And if this board so desires, I've had contact from AIG, our potential financing. And I think we ought to follow up with them again, to see whether our finance be done in, in us, be it for the golf course or for the clubhouse at a future day.
Commissioner, is everyone okay with pursuing that as an alternative as Plan B?
Well, I prefer to go with the city for financing. Of course, I mean, we need to, regardless of the C I T, the city, we need to get all our numbers prepared for them.
I don't disagree at all. My question to you is, looking at the, the funding from the city from the last time was less expensive than the private financing was, which is a reason why we went that, mainly how we put that route. The question is, is that should we have a, another rigid strategy of financing that comes into delay?
It doesn't matter.
All options are good options.
Well, okay, all right, so everybody agrees that that's our option?
We will go to the city first with a number, a refined number, and then at the same, simultaneously, I'll be talking to potential private sponsors.
Are you okay with that, you do this objection? Okay. So are we going to expect here from the two weeks?
Yes, and if I can get to a written report prior to that.
Next item, it's a participation in Boca championship cost off of that. Do you have a representative, the, the, the commission?
Well, like before, Mr. Carbone is up in the audience to speak to us. As you know, last year, we made a sizable contribution to the Boca championship, and I think we were instrumental, if not responsible, for the continuation of that event in the city of Boca Raton. It is a worthy cause, and it is an event by which we have a great deal of public exposure. And I can't tell you how many people have come up to me over the past year and thanked us for our participation in that, especially with the hospital being the ultimate benefit. However, we, I'm sure Eddie Soutre would like to give as much money as possible from us. But we've had a discussion tonight about cost projects, available resources, and what I'd like to do, Eddie, if you want to tell us what you can do for us. If you'd like Aaron's presentation, that's fine. But before I put the question to you, if I would like to make attribution this year for the event, I think I'd like to take the next, between now and the next meeting, to take a closer look at our finances, to see what, what would be available for us. I don't want to jeopardize any of our projects. I don't want to delay projects because of a charitable contribution, no matter how worthwhile it is. But I'd really like to have a couple weeks to, before our next meeting, up to, at our next meeting, with the number. But I don't need to table it. If Eddie's ready to be eloquent tonight and tell us what, what the district can expect out of participation, I think it may be helpful.
All right, Eddie, you want to come forward? This is, no guarantees here, just want you to understand, we'll listen to your story. You heard our story tonight.
Oh yeah, it's been, it's been awesome seeing this project getting closer and closer to fruition. I'll keep my remarks fairly brief. First of all, a huge thank you to the commissioners and the district for supporting the championship last year, and it must be on Golf Channel broadcast in seventy-five million homes domestically and across, across the globe, in partnership with the city of Boca Raton, and with the Palm Beach County, it was absolutely instrumental in this event being here. On Tuesday last week, we announced we have a new sponsor, it is Oasis. So we will now be the Oasis championship, February fourth through ten, at the old course at Broken Sound. And we will certainly come back in two weeks with the requests specific, but there were three or four areas we thought that would certainly make sense to promote Boca National championship. We have over seven hundred volunteers that support this championship, enable us to raise money. Last year raised two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for charity. Primary beneficiary was, as Mr. Coste noted, the Boca Raton Regional Hospital. That would certainly be one of the big initiatives, that would be a component of the partnership. We would also have a expo area and special branding area to promote the golf course, all of which we would handle in coordination with staff to make it very simple and return key to promote the event to more than sixty-eight thousand golfers and fans that attend the championship during the week. And then also to some various tickets and hospitality and other elements to support the championship, including advertising, to support and promote Boca National to this really critical audience that's here in Boca Raton annually, and hopefully for many more years. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Aaron, we'll visit this in two weeks, and then, so you can come back and give us another rundown as to what you think our buy-in might be with this project. Thank you very much. I agree, it's approval of longevity bonus. Art, you want to start that off and give us a background on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and the longevity bonuses have been a part of the district operation for a number of years, as we follow the city's Boca Raton's compensation package. And these are bonuses that are given to employees, employees who are, have been with the district for a period of at least five years. We have two such employees this year, if I'm not mistaken, Prey Ham and Madeline. And I'm here to ask approval for the longevity bonuses to each of those employees in accordance with our adopted personnel and HR policy that we have been following, which is the city's policy. Now, we are in the process of preparing our own HR documents. I can't promise the longevity bonuses will be in there next year, that will be something to come before this board, once the report has been completed by Cynthia Setalack and her firm. But both of these employees are great employees. Their service is invaluable to us, and they have received them in the past. There is a precedent. I recommend that we make these longevity payments for the year two thousand.
Is it quick? Yeah, Suzie's, I'd like to approve, and second it. Craig, are these bonuses in your own?
They are in the charge report, not, not listed.
No, after they get approval.
After approval, we will put them in the next cycle.
Okay, and those amounts are, for the record, eight hundred and twelve hundred respectively?
One thousand.
One thousand, I'm sorry. Okay, so they'll be our next to report then, for...
A simple question. Are you saying that this is paid every year on the summer first, and has been paid for the last?
Yes, since, since the parties have been, they were up after five years, not during the first four years of Prey Ham's.
Why, when I came to the city, part of that dream was that my years might be in the city, and the city would pay me?
Personally, I'm fine with the structure, but I'm a little disappointed with our analysis. We had the discussion last, first quarter of last year where we gave the bonuses, it was never mentioned, the longevity bonuses, I don't find it. And I felt kind of like, this is, you know, we should have known that it's all the information. So it's a full compensation package. If we're going to follow the city's package for it, we need the complete components of the city's package, and that goes with what grade level are they, what pay range are they, all those kind of things. I'm supportive of the concept of it, but this has got to be a going forward practice, and I'm not sure everything is consistent.
Well, it can't be something that you can predict for the next year, because the city, and some of the bonuses that have been paid, these have been bonuses that the city has adopted, that may be outside of the policy. And we've given bonuses to all of our employees if the city manager has determined that city employees are getting them.
But I guess the challenge here is, this is an apology, this is, it's a little fuzzy, because you're going forward with the new, you know, golf group, you're going to have a different group of people involved, so...
Well, that's why we have a lot of...
If you have a heavy program, it's got to be defined for the district, and it can mirror the city, but that's it.
Hey, that's why we're working on the, the, you know, I was, I was looking through the HR manual that Setalack is preparing for us, and there's, there's a place in there for that if we want to continue it. There's a lot of things in there that I probably will not want to buy into some of the things, but we need to separate ourselves and our management, our employees, from the rules and regulations of the city. And that's what this manual will allow us to do, correct, Art?
That is correct.
There's some things that, you know, may be fine for the city employees that we may not want to do without.
I don't think we've still, still again implemented our retirement policy.
No, but we did buy group health policy, Art.
That's what the city employees get retirement to.
Yeah, well, we, yeah, we provided them this, this past year, it could be used in lieu of, you know, the person's going to purchase a 401K or put the money aside, so. So we did recognize that. I think as part of this process that we go through, whether it's defined benefit program or a deferred comp or a 401K, that's going to have to be provided, and that was mentioned in the HR packet. So, and certainly, we wouldn't want anything less for our employees than what's right then.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Treasurer?
Oh, was there, okay, I'm sorry. There is a motion. It's been a long time. It's been... Thank you, Aaron. You're so helpful. All those in favor, say aye. Close light sign, pass, and Mr.... Mr. Treasurer, would you mind doing the treasurer's report, please? Yes, we have one change in the treasurer's report, and that follows the removal of the Southern Hills invoice to ten thousand dollars. With that, the total invoices in our request to the local warehouse, two million nine hundred twelve thousand forty-one dollars and six cents. The reason that the ten thousand was removed, I spoke with Wayne, I looked at the contract that confirmed with council. It would be easier if they followed their schedule of what they said, and he's not complete with the full portions that he put in the bill in January, it's part of the twenty thousand, I don't mind on this. So if you defer, you will not pay on this cycle, but will pay on, on January.
Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Prince. Commissioner, do you have a motion in front of you made by the treasurer?
The one that you have, I'm sorry, there are three invoices that were added, so you should schedule. One, the senior to the office, for the contract, for additional three thousand, and then two in the rest of the people that took them.
So the total amount of your motion was?
Two million nine hundred twelve thousand forty-one dollars and six cents.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Volosan. Further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Close light sign, pass, and Mr. Prince. All right, I'll start now with you. Any reports?
Well, just a question to the board, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to pursue the proposal, contract for sale and purchase that was presented for property at fifty-nine ten North West, Second Avenue?
Could that purchase and the acquisition be included in the funds that we are going to request from the city?
It could be.
Yeah, I think that's what Art was, wanting permission to negotiate with the seller. I think originally we talked about the desirability of having that parcel in our, in our golf course.
Well, it also is, it was in some way dependent upon the city's approval of an abandonment of Jeffrey Street, because it would become more valuable to us if the city was going to abandon Jeffrey Street. I'm not sure if we have furnished to the mayor, I don't think we have the study that was done by Southern Hills traffic person about the railroad crossing.
Well, I think before we spend our time negotiating, we find advocacy if that's a possibility of abandonment, because that would be most desirable, to have that property, Art, and without this, the road thing.
I'll make a new query tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
And I have nothing for the question.
Greg?
Couple items. One is, through discussions with Art, there is a balance that is currently at SunTrust, and it's earning a very minimal yield. And after discussions with Art, we believe it would be better to transfer that balance, it's probably, it's a little over two million dollars. If we transferred it to Florida Prime, we would get an interest return as a ceiling two percent. And there is really no purpose really for the SunTrust bank accounts. I'd like to recommend closing that account, answering the purposes. First, we Bank of America, well, actually, Bank of America and State Department, it's creation. Art, is that valid? Nope, I think it's good enough.
Is that an approved depository order?
Yes, it's the Florida, state of Florida.
Okay. That's not the same one that we had to get our money out of?
It's, it is the same one, but it's a little bit of a shape, three years.
Need a second to Mr. Prince's motion, and second if you're trying to do further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Close light sign, pass, and Mr....
So there, just a couple other items. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to come to Sherwood Sand to see both the snow day as well as the Olympic championship, which was amazing. And I think that the parents and the maintenance staff, I didn't see the advocatees that are out there. that are out there. They do replace the nets and cushions, inspect them quarterly, replace them annually. Uh, they've been there for many years. One of, like the suggestion, and one of the parents was, rather than tearing everything down and replacing it, they suggested more off that would be better. So, something to explore, we need to do that in the future, but, um, there are other listed needs that could be coming along, um, related to Little League, but it's definitely used by our residents and well liked.
So, uh, you know, in our last meeting, we approved a RFP for the batting cages. Are you suggesting anything different?
Well, I'm suggesting that given that we just approved the, uh, Patch Reef course, we achieved a hundred and sixty thousand dollar change order as women racket, and we anticipate at least a hundred thousand dollar change order for, again, for women racket. We need to be very prudent with any additional expenses, so it's fine to do the planning of these things, but I, I think we should stay within our budget and not go after anything that's excessive, because we have no contingency right now.
You know, I, I'll tell you, I'm real conflicted on, on that, uh, issue, Craig, because we had a gentleman from Boca Little League come in and expressed the safety issue with that. Uh, secondly, uh, the, uh, the city, and this is a high priority of our budget a year ago, that was never done, uh, and, but before, I think we ought to move forward with the, you know, completion of the RFP to see what's involved before I totally kill the project. And I also mentioned too, that while I don't normally favor this kind of a line of thought, is Boca Little League, we're interested in, was expressing interest in participating in expense. Uh, so, um, before we would go any further, I would want to know what the safety issues are, if there are safety issues. And one part that concerned me was the proximity of the tunnels that they described to them in the netting, so if somebody was, uh, in the other tunnel against the netting, and a ball could hit, that, that was a safety issue.
You have the steel bars that are about halfway, and the ball, and then the netting, they're basically right of measure.
Right.
So, you can.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's concerning to me, as a safety issue or anything else, although there has been no reported incidents of that, but doesn't mean that we couldn't have that. It's been expressed as a safety issue, and I think we need to explore that as a safety issue as well, uh, to avoid any liability concerns in the future.
Mr. Chair, inside everybody's folder is a memo from, like, the city's manager, Melissa. She evaluated some of the upcoming projects, um, and just in a letter, and it's kind of explained to us, so we can talk about it at a future meeting, but talking about table and some of the projects that we did not get there, and we want to find these projects that we're not going to afford. So, it's just something to look at in the future, and it's been a folder.
Okay, all right. So, so if it's acceptable, and everybody's agree, we'll continue with the RFP for this project, and I think in different, Melissa has proposed like four different options, uh, design costs, and we could pick and choose those if we decide to go for it.
The only thing I'd suggest in those design options, again, from a parent's perspective, we're talking to several parents out there, they were more interested in additional, um, batting cages rather than replacing them, if existing. The batting cages have been there for a long time, and they work, so.
I agree, I'd rather hear from the experts and the parents, because I think every parent is an expert in sports, and, okay. Anything else, Craig? No? Okay. Commissioner Ryan?
No. Just want to thank Melissa for all the updates on the facilities. This has been very helpful, um, every time we, you know, do this, so keep them coming, please, and happy holidays, everybody.
I'd like to, on a positive note, however, I, I do want to ask Melissa, we had two letters from an anonymous person regarding an issue at Patch Reef Park and a tennis academy that's, uh, being negotiated with someone at the moment. Uh, the issues I had, have with that is a concern about the, the usage of space by the academy, uh, the cost that's involved, or the revenue that's being generated by this academy, which is, Aaron, you haven't seen the letters?
No.
Okay. Uh, I'll make sure that you get the, the letters. There, there are anonymous letters, you haven't seen any, Craig? Sue, Sue got one, and she mentioned it at our, at our last meeting.
There was one a long time ago.
This was recent, this was in the last thirty days. We've had two letters.
Within the last week.
I know you, I know you.
Last week, you didn't get a copy of the new one.
There's no, there are no second charges. Don't they?
On the last, on the last meeting, yes.
No, but we, we've gotten one since then, just last week, Joanne brought me a copy of another one.
Here's, here's the, the issue. The letter was complaining about the, the academy, uh, in, in the persons, anonymous persons of view taking over the use of tennis courts, um, at the expense of our residents. And we battled with this issue once before, and I, I would have thought that there had been some, uh, forethought by the city in, in entering into negotiations on a tennis academy to talk to us about the viability of that, that our project, and I, I asked Jacob at our last meeting, and Sam, to investigate what the word term operational meant at Patch Reef, whether the city was free to open up a, a new venue, uh, for the residents at Patch Reef without having come forward and discussed with us. And I, I thought, given the problem that we had experienced when the Adal issue came up with the academy, there was enough public outcry with the, the thought that they were going to be losing court space on that. The other side of the issue is that, it's my understanding that, uh, the tennis academy is using time that's not genuinely allocated to the public, because the time from the courts are not used. However, I think it's advisable that we get a report on, on this at our next meeting to clear the air on, on this, and whoever the anonymous person is, probably the same anonymous person that got the petition started against an Adal group, because there must be some concern that there is, uh, going to be loss of court time to the residents, as this academy is indicated, uh, was going to be taking over time at the tennis court. So, Melissa, if you would, I'd like to have a report on it in our next meeting, and I'd ask you to also get the letters to both Aaron and Craig and Steve, as they must not have seen those, because I think it's important that we review those.
Yes, I recall the conversation, I didn't see that.
Okay. Well, there was a subsequent letter too, Craig, to, yeah, so you need to have that one. I don't like receiving anonymous letters any more than anybody else, and if you're, if you have a complaint, come address it publicly, or, or put your name to the letter, but I think we do need to have an explanation about the academy itself, how much time is going to be taken up, how much revenue is going to be generated by this, and the revenue comes to us, by the way, since we're funding that facility. So, I, I'd like to know whether this is going to be, you know, money-making operation, or is, is the revenue minimum to the loss of court space that may, may happen with, to our residents, so. And with that, I would just say happy holidays, happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Sam.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go down and do our research and question further with the petrification matter that's been talked about, and this is something that I've been asking a little bit more further for ownership, and other issues that we, the city itself. We'll get back to you next month, as you're pursuing the further recommendation, to Art to go into, and approach that, and put some information, how we can have a good work, and have that conversation with the city, and, um, there are, there are all, if any previous issues on the property, considering the relationships that they have had in conversation, or the, or clear presentation.
Would you also ask, uh, Jacob, if he would, sir? Thank you very much. Commissioners, I have no further business. You're, you're too late this time, Eric. Move by votes, I'm saying about Commissioner Art's, all those say aye, hold like sign, pass, and Mr. Enz, meeting adjourned.